I have to call her when we finish.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, it's February 16th, 2023, and the time is 6:30. We welcome you all here today for our council meeting. I'll do roll call right now. So council, when I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton?
I'm here.
Councilmember Stroop?
Here.
Elizondo?
Here.
Councilmember Bliss is not present. Councilmember Kerner, not present. Councilmember Parker?
Here.
Councilmember Mencio?
Present.
With five members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. Would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to thank everybody for being here tonight, attending our meeting. We are live broadcasting tonight's meeting. If you do get an opportunity to speak as part of the meeting, I ask that that all comments be made from the microphone up here at the podium so that those comments can be heard over the live streaming portion of the meeting also. If you do speak, I ask that you state your name. And if you're from an agency that's here to present, state what agency you're from. Or if you're speaking as a resident, please state whether you're a resident of Fair Oaks Ranch or not. And we had nobody sign up to speak as part of Citizens to be Heard. Is there anybody here tonight that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak as part of a Citizens to be Heard? No? Okay, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda tonight. First is the approval of the January 24th, 2023 Special City Council Town Hall Meeting Minutes. The second item was approval of the February 2nd, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. And the third item is approval of a resolution between the City of Fair Oaks Ranch and the Office of the Governor for the Bullet Resistance Shield Grant Program and to authorize the city manager to execute all documents in connection therewith. Is there any council member that would like to remove any of the items from consent to consideration? That then could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
From Chesley, and a second from Scott, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the consent agenda is approved. That will move on to our consideration and discussion items tonight. The first item that we have up is the consideration in the possible action of proving a one-time residential brush pickup and disposal services related to the February ice storm. And Carol?
Good evening, council. We are here tonight to present you the brush data we collected related to this February ice storm we recently experienced and to provide you with a price quote from Republic Services, our exclusive franchisee contractor for solid waste. Tom Omstrom with Republic is here with me to help answer any questions you may have. So, as you all are aware, we had this tremendous ice storm in February and the icy conditions were really experienced in Fair Oaks Ranch. And according to the National Weather Service map here, we received up to and exceeded at times more than half inches of ice accumulation. The impact of that, of course, caused significant tree damage throughout our city. The icy aftermath, some news medias said it was very comparable to damage done by a tornado. Unfortunately for us, Governor Abbott's emergency declaration did not include our counties. I do not. They didn't feel like to include us. They include, the majority of the locations they include was in the Austin area.
Do we need to ask, or do we know that?
So later in the slide, you will see that we are proceeding with a local declaration and get that submitted to the state as a city, a local city declaration of emergency.
But he, sorry?
No, go ahead.
But he didn't, they didn't deny that because we haven't done it yet, correct?
We have not done it yet. Yeah, we're coming there. Yes, thank you for asking. So for, so that we can ascertain a price quote to help our residents with removing and disposing of the brush, we needed to ascertain the amount that was out there so that we can get an appropriate price. So from February 8th through the 10th, the city and Republic staff drove around every street in Fair Oaks Ranch and collected the following brush data. We have a software program called The Collector. And as we went, resident to resident, we pinned that in our software. These brown, these green dots reflect a location of where the brush was found. We found 1,683 piles of brush placed on the curbside, which is almost half the number of our residential properties. It was approximately 35,000 cubic yards of brush. The piles ranged from 15 to 487 cubic yards. This brush amount, when we went back and looked at some historical data, is approximately six years of volume gathered during the average spring and fall bulk brush events. I need visualization, so I created this slide to show what that is comparable to. The amount of brush we have would fill a football field with a brush height of 15 feet high. It would also fill almost 11 Olympic-sized swimming pools. It would fill a one-acre lot with a brush height of 21 feet. Our Meadow Creek Station is 3.4 acres. It would fill that entire acreage with 6.38 height of brush. So it kind of hopefully gives you a little idea of how much is out there. So we have been working with Republic Services. Once we received this data and gave them the cubic yards, they were able to provide us with a quote. So for 35,000 cubic yards as of February 10th, they can complete a disposal pickup and removal in an eight-week period by utilizing six trucks with large-capacity trailers five days a week. Each load will hold eight tons. The estimated start date would be February 27th, and the cost is approximately $936,105. To break that down a little bit for you, we have this information. You'll see that there's six trucks, five days a week. They're going to be operating 11 hours per day. And again, it's an eight-week completion timeframe. So I, we have heard from the staff perspective if there are alternatives to the Republic quote. And this here is for you all's discussion and consideration. I have provided you some alternatives to help our residents as well as us when it comes to the funding. So one thought is we can cancel a future or multiple future bulk brush pickup events. Each event equals $149,000, which would be credited to the cost of this one-time special brush pickup. We could also limit the brush pile size of the pickup. Our normal allowable pickup size is about 15 cubic yards. Residents can also call Republic Services for a special pickup. A fee applies. Additionally, we know that there are other alternatives. We have just not had the time during the week to completely vet everything. So we are continuing. One option is the city possibly can obtain either by rental or purchasing a chipper. We would need to secure a drop-off location so that we can chip the brush. We are also possibly can get pricing from other pickup and disposal services, from other solid waste vendors. Republic, being our exclusive franchise, respectfully requested that they present their quote to the council before we did any further research or bid processing. There's also county brush disposal in Kendall and County, I'm sorry, Kendall and Comel that our residents can use. A fee does apply. I, if you have a little pile, I encourage you to call them. Maybe they will take it for free if you explain it was the ice event. But those options are there for Kendall and Comel. We are still working with Bear County on what they can help us with for a brush disposal option. So one question I was asked is what other municipalities were affected and how did they handle it? So we did reach out to Bernie. Bernie has a customer solid waste rate that includes a monthly bulk brush pickup of four cubic yards. The brush must be cut, tied, and put in sections no longer than five feet, and pieces cannot be more than five inches in diameter. So the residents have that monthly option. The city also does an annual separate bulk brush collection with the same requirements as their provider. That monthly event occurred between February 6th and the 10th. So it was very helpful to them. Then the city went ahead and held a special one-day brush collection event on February 15th, which was yesterday. Residents needed to call to schedule a pickup. Garden Ridge, per their solid waste contract provisions, I believe they told me it was four or five dumpsters were placed on the city property for two days for residents to drop off their brush to be placed in those dumpsters. Their solid waste provider then hauled off that disposal. The City of Halotes has a regular scheduled bulk brush collection, which occurred February 6th through the 10th. Their limit is up to 12 cubic yards per household. Chavino Park is currently working with their solid waste provider for placement of dumpsters for residential drop-off as well. I have been waiting for a phone call for a little bit more information, such as is the city picking up the fund, funding of that? Or is their solid waste provider providing it for free? I have not heard back. But just wanted to let you know that Chavino is looking for placement of dumpsters. I believe because they currently had a bulk brush collection just before the ice storm or during the ice storm. Now for funding and assistance, because I know this is the most important and critical part of all of this. Scott, our Assistant City Manager, will review the funding options with you. And then I will come back and talk about the state assistance that we are currently progressing.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Scott Hughesen-Gay, Assistant City Manager for Administrative Services. We want to put together a list of these possible funding alternatives for this project, understanding that, of course, the amounts and allocations at this point are probably, you know, to some degree at least unknown, the level of assistance also unknown at this point. But with the understanding that the city likely will be responsible for some portion of this at some point in time, probably at least front-loaded to some degree while those assistance mechanisms are being determined and investigated. So we want to put together a preliminary list for council's consideration as we go through the path of determining how to go about this project. So with the understanding that a lot of these sources ultimately come from the same pot, so to speak, the first, I think, most obvious and probably recommended source is our general funds reserve. Council is well aware that our policy calls for an operating reserve of 50% of general fund expenditures. We have that amount. That 50% equates to $4.2 million in the current fiscal year. And the very reason to have an operating policy is for unforeseen economic or environmental situations along with cash flow purposes. So I think that would be a perfectly appropriate use of the reserve in this situation. Similarly, the council will recall just a couple of weeks ago that the council opted to not allocate the remaining surplus from the prior fiscal year. That amount was $738,000. So that is on top of the $4.2 million in operating reserve and is available at this time. And finally, still in the general fund, you will hear from the Director of Finance at the end of the agenda tonight that we are currently projecting in the first quarter a positive variance of about just under half a million dollars in the current fiscal year, primarily due to salary savings. So several options to choose from for the council on a cash flow basis. Again, while the full scope is not yet known, we do have some sources to choose from. Other alternatives include the Strategic Projects Fund. The council appropriated $3.5 million in new projects in the current year. Some of those projects are already underway. If we wanted to opt to cancel or push off some projects, we would need a little more vetting on, you know, what that would look like. But the list of projects in the Strategic Projects Fund is in your packet as part of our first quarter report. It's, I want to say it's page 107. All the list of projects in the Strategic Projects Fund are in your packet tonight as another possibility. And finally, there is an option, if we don't want to dip into reserves or appropriations of possibly short-term borrowing, such as a tax note or similar types of features. The city has a very strong credit. I'd expect we could get interest rates of 3.5% or less. And I just want to put on there just for, just for your reference purposes, if we opted for any of these and we wanted to either restore the general fund reserve or pay for some type of short-term borrowing scenario, a one cent on our levy is, represents approximately $200,000. So as you're doing the math, if you want to pay it back over one year or multiple years, that's kind of the baseline for what that equates to in levy terms. So lots of unknowns, lots of options, but we want to put together at least a basic package for you as far as funding alternatives. So I'll turn it back over, and if there's questions, of course, I'll be here all week.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. So the last area that I wanted to discuss, and thank you, Councilwoman Mencio for bringing it up. But tomorrow, we are hoping to have the mayor issue a local disaster declaration along with a letter of request for assistance to the State Operations Center. That is the first step in getting, hopefully, assistance. And next week, we need to, council will need to ratify that declaration and approve, hopefully, a standing declaration. So that would be the next steps. And I'm going to turn that over to the mayor, if you don't mind, if you had any questions regarding that, because I know we're looking forward to doing that tomorrow.
I don't mind at all. The, earlier this week, we reached out to TDM. It's the Texas Division of Emergency Management. It handles emergency management for the state of Texas. And the first question really was, you know, we've experienced a significant event. And right now, it's beyond our capabilities, right now, to handle it with actually monetary what we have and our resources within the city to take care of it. And so explained that all to them, and they, and asked, do they have capability that we can utilize? And the answer was yes. They have programs and they have services that could help us out. I don't know the specifics on it. And so the first step would be to declare a disaster, which will be a declaration I can do as the mayor, and then a letter to the governor requesting assistance. With that, that would start the process of TDM sending a representative out here to start the assessment of what we have here and the determining what assets that they could provide to help us with the situation. I think it's a good opportunity for us at least to see what capabilities that they could help us out with before we start looking at the other options that we have available to us that were presented. If I do declare a disaster, I'm required within seven days to bring that back to council and for council to ratify it, which would mean that sometime next week, we'd have to do a special meeting, bring the council together. Generally, it could be a quick meeting, and we could probably do it any time of the day that meets all of our schedules to get the most of us here. But just to be clear, so everybody understands that it would require an additional meeting to push that out beyond seven days. But so if we declare tomorrow, which is the plan?
Yes, sir.
Then by next Thursday, close of business, we'd have to have a council ratification.
Correct.
Couple of questions. Obviously, yes, let's get free money that we pay for in taxes. But is there any guarantee, so, you know, we're looking at these numbers and trying to make a decision, which I know we don't have to complete a decision tonight. Is there any idea of if the state will say, no, we're not giving you anything? Because, you know, whatever it was, 900 and something thousand dollars or 1.2, numbers are floating, is a lot of money, I mean, and the percentage of our budget is very large. And so I have concerns moving forward and saying, yeah, let's move forward with this without knowing at least we could get something. So is there, do we know that, or?
Do I know for sure? No, I don't. The indications that I got over the phone when I talked to the district coordinator is, yes, there are programs out there. When I explained the situation, he sounded like that it would be something that is supported. But until somebody comes out and really does an assessment.
And did they say how long that all takes by any chance?
They are all standing by, waiting on the declaration, so.
Awesome.
And that's why I'd like to get it up to the State Operations Center tomorrow, because it'll start the ball rolling pretty quick for us. Good questions. And the part about the counties, I don't know the answer to that. All I know is that we can look internal and say that I believe that we have a situation here beyond our capabilities and provides an emergency condition to our residents and something that we need to act upon, so.
Would, are expediting action to solve some of the problems based on where the brush has been, I guess, kind of placed around the community compromise our ability to get relief from the state? The concern I have is that the material has been placed out right next to our streets. I think a lot of our residents consider the pickup is imminent. And in some cases, it's been put in drainage swales and things like that. I think that creates a road hazard. It creates, if we so happen to get heavy rains, that's going to be a problem. So, you know, I think we need to do something quickly. But I just want to know, would that compromise the state's perception of us needing relief?
I don't know the full answer to that, not until they come out and really do an assessment and tell us what, you know, they look at the situation, determine really what, from their perspective, the emergency condition that we have. Excuse me. And determine what capabilities they can provide. It may or may not. I mean, we've done some organization.
With some drone shots accompanying our filing, help with them, expedite their response?
I believe that, I believe we'll get a response either way. I mean, I think right now, the individual that will be our POC that will come out and actually do the assessment is standing by, waiting for the declaration. And once they get the go-ahead, they're ready to launch. They've already been in communications with us. And one other point that Roy brought up, you talked about, we've done a lot of piling of brush, which we told residents to put it on the street right away. As I drive around, there are still a lot of trees, limbs in lots that have not been policed up and brought out. And I think that should also be a consideration as part of this.
Well, I just want to mention real quickly, Chesley, is that some of the reason, if you drive by my place, the limbs are sitting where they fell, because I'm going to have a contractor come and do my cleanup. And we have a lot of residents, you know, I'm just using my block, which I'm most familiar with. Most of the residents have done their own cleanup, and I think that's fine. I think this is an issue that affects the whole city. But, you know, one of the considerations is, I think, the more time that goes by, there's probably going to be more residents that have that work scheduled, but the contractors are taking time to get to it, or they're going to do something about it themselves. And so I actually expect by the time we get around to picking some of the stuff, the volumes are going to drop over what that initial assessment showed to some extent. And so even if we just have to default back to the contract issue, I think we should look at strategies of, you know, how can we make it kind of interactive pricing? You know, my familiarity with this, a lot of this kind of work's done, you know, on a weight basis. And if somehow or another, the final weights come in lower, that we would only be charged for actuals versus, you know, some estimate based on a flyby quantification of the problem. Thanks. Sorry, Ches.
That was actually, I agree with you completely. That was going to be my question, is things change. So I know in the back 40 where I am, we've got the, if you look at it, it's like 100 yards of brush, because we have big properties, and I haven't even cleared half of my properties. So you guys have come out and you've looked, but, I mean, it's not even probably a quarter of what I'm going to throw out there for that. So how, this estimate that we're seeing, how, is that going to be based, like Roy said, on weight? Or, I mean, is it going to change? Or is it going to go up? Is it going to go down? So I have concerns, I would say, regarding that as well. And the other thing I wanted to mention that has nothing really to do with Republic is, I really feel like maybe we should put out some sort of communication. Obviously, we've put out communication that you can start putting brush out. But driving by where I have, I'm actually getting hit by branches because people are putting it so close to the street that the branches are falling in or they're sticking out. So we need to be careful and maybe communicate that, stick it back farther, because I've literally at 4 o'clock in the morning hit multiple branches in the road. So I think communication also is going to be a large key if we can do that. I would appreciate it. But to you on the sliding scale?
Weight is a function in this equation for sure, but it's on the disposal side. So the biggest part of the cost is on the hauling itself, which is picking it up, loading up the containers and taking those from the landfill and then coming back. So the, there's two things that can affect this number. Number one is the 35,000 cubic yards accurate. It's what we eyeballed when we went through. We got it validated with city staff that was with us. There could still be some things in the trees that hasn't fallen down. There could be limbs and branches behind buildings that we couldn't see from the, from the street when we were eyeballing it. That would drive the number the wrong way. What can drive the number the right way is increasing the payload of each haul. So each trailer that we pull up, the more we can get in there, the fewer hauls we're going to have to do. That's what drives your cost. The disposal is the cost to dispose of it at the landfill. It's about a tenth of the total bill. So the weight itself is a factor. The biggest factor is how much we get in each trailer. Now, if we get a bunch of branches where it's a Now, if we get a bunch of branches where it's a 12, 15-foot branch and it has all these other branches coming off of it and it's a big bushy thing, we put that in the trailer, we can push it down with a claw, but it's going to bounce right, right back up. The best way to do it is they've got to be cut down into the smallest size as possible. So whether you can entice residents to cut these down, it would be in the city's best, best interest. I drove in tonight down Ralph Fair Road and just in that little stretch, I saw some big piles and they were big branches that are going to increase the number of hauls rather than decrease it. So once it's out of the curb, it's going to be tough to get residents to go out and do something else. Do, does Public Works have bandwidth to help out with that and cut some of it down? I, I don't know, but that's, that's something that, that could help. But in order to minimize the bill, that's, that's the best thing to do is to cut it down so that it's, it's more dense in the, in the trailers and it increases, increases the payload. You don't want light loads. You want loads at the DOT limit if you, if you can, because that's going to decrease the.
So what I'm hearing though is that it's a sliding scale. It's not a set amount. So it could go up, it could go down depending on if our estimate of 35 cubic, 3,500, whatever you said, 35,000 cubic yards is correct. So if it's 50, we're going to owe for that. If it's 20, we're going to owe less. So we really.
It's an estimate.
Yeah, it's a ballpark, got it.
Now, hopefully, Mr. Elizondo is right and people, there's a lot of people out there taking care of it on their own. The Friday after the, the storm, I was driving through the city and I saw quite a bit of that activity going, going on. It seemed to be on the, the bigger lots that, that were doing that. But there was a lot of activity going on and, you know, what we always look for in, in our cities is, when a landscaping company gives a quote to take care of everything, part of that quote is that they haul it off and dispose of it. And what we find happens is they time it, they time their calls with our pickup schedule and they save their disposal money by chopping it up and leaving it at the, at the curb. So run into that a bit too. So hopefully, a lot of that is going on that would help minimize it as well.
My proposal would be is, let's pursue the options with the state of Texas first and how much help that we can get from there, which then would drive us to what the remainder of the requirement is. And then we can come back and determine what we need to do for disposal by other means.
I can live with that. That makes sense, except that I think that we need to have, you know, a trigger date that if it's going to be more than a certain amount of time, we're going to need to take some other kind of action. Because my concern is, is that we have all this brush piled up along the roadside, which I think is a little bit of a safety hazard. And again, it's in the drainage swales in some locations. And I think, you know, if we so happen to get, you know, a heavy rain, that that's going to cause some other kinds of issues. So I just, I think we can't, you know, once the stuff is out there, it's, it's, it's kind of a big problem. So we need to have some kind of a, of a date that if we're getting quick response and we look like we're getting positive traction at the state, we can move forward in that direction. But if that's not happening, I think we need to look at some other options to at least handle the most critical areas where the pileups are the biggest or something. You know, my sense is, is that a lot of the larger acreage projects are, are where a lot of the big volumes are and that a lot of the newer subdivisions, there just weren't those kind of trees. But, you know, try to look at prioritizing the areas that we need to clean up for safety reasons first.
I was just going to say, I agree with what you said. I think we should move forward with clearing the disaster with the state. But I would like to make sure, and I think we've already said this, that we communicate with residents what we're doing and how it's going to happen. And please don't put branches where they're shoving into the streets where people are going to hit them because that's a safety hazard. I mean, try to minimize it as much as we can until we can figure out what we're going to do from here. And if we have to meet again Thursday anyways, or by next Thursday, then at least we can have some idea. So I, I agree with moving forward with that.
I don't see, could we go ahead and put out a communication? Or talking about the safety hazard of piles extending over into the road?
Absolutely, not a problem.
As far as putting out communications, what we're going to do, let's, let's get a plan together and then we'll do that. And I agree, I think if we get the declaration filed tomorrow, get TDM moving, and I believe we'll have at least some answers that we can talk about when we come together for the special meeting.
The special meeting has to be within seven days?
Within seven days.
So we don't have to wait till Thursday?
We don't have to wait till the seventh day, correct.
Yeah, we can go Monday, so.
Well, we still have the, the requirement for the three-day notification as part of it. But I think Wednesday and Thursday were the options that we have.
Monday, the office is closed.
Monday's a holiday. But we, yes, we still need 72 hours to post the agenda.
I'm, I'm available on Thursday, not Wednesday. Available, well, it depends on, I guess.
Yeah, by close of business on Thursday.
Right, so it would have to be before five o'clock.
During the day, but most of us are busy, so I would think evening would be better for them.
If we can, that's, I'm asking, because before I heard you say it has to be done by close of business on Thursday. So if we meet at, you know, 6:30, it's past close of business?
We'd still be fine, I believe.
Okay.
And the seven days, I mean, if we file tomorrow, then it's just by the end of the day on Thursday, by midnight Thursday.
Okay, perfect.
Having heard all that, I think that's great. Just to have, you know, a Plan B in place, do we need to at least provide staff some sort of guidance for whatever portions of funds that we need to throw at this? My personal preference would be to use the unallocated reserve or the projected underrun for this fiscal year. It's kind of like the starting place for that. And I don't know if, if we need to do anything more formal than just say, you know, what buckets do we think are an opportunity if we end up having to throw some money at this, which I feel like there's a pretty high likelihood we will.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
And you have plenty of time, can bring that back at the next meeting so you can still have the same deliberation.
I would say it's hard for me to decide what bucket we want to come out of when I don't know how much money I'm actually pulling out of that bucket.
Right. I'd also like to still explore other contractors. If there are alternatives.
Yes, got it, thank you.
Roy's comment, well understood, but yes, we do need to consider that. I was just trying to think through what's, is a requirement that staff need a indication today? Or if we make a decision next Thursday or even later, is that enough time?
Yes, sir.
On whether to pull them on.
You don't need to make a decision today. Well, I don't think we're prepared to accept your decision today. We, we still have a lot of info. We just wanted to show you the various scenarios that were available at this point.
I guess my, my main point is, is that my least favorable option to me is either depleting our operating reserve, which would have to be restocked from tax money and/or, you know, doing the short-term debt. If we have sufficient funds available without having to tap those kind of sources that would, you know, drive right into our tax rate.
All right. Well, so we'll drive forward tomorrow with the disaster declaration and the letter to the governor. And we'll get information out to all the council members afterwards to let you know the status of where it's at. And as soon as I get any information back from TDM, we'll also push that out to council members so they're aware of what's happening.
And we're setting the special meeting for Thursday? Is that what I heard?
And I just wanted to clarify, because I didn't mention it, and Dan, let me know if I'm wrong, but I believe what you'll be doing on Thursday is approving the ratification via an ordinance. Or, I mean, it's like, it'll take five minutes, 10 minutes? Yes, yeah, just like we did with the COVID, we brought you an ordinance. I think it's similar to that.
So all we need is the first reading by next, close of business next Thursday?
We did it as an ordinance because there were enforcement provisions, which will not be present in this one. So I will double check that, but I think it's just going to be a resolution.
Okay, so. Just, just wanted to clarify that is, what, what the process is, because I didn't put that in the slide. So yes, proceed. And do you guys, I'm sorry, would you like to schedule a time for Thursday so that we can get prepared on posting notices?
6:30, does that work for everybody?
Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
I don't have a questions, but I, I failed to start this off with that a lot of the work and a lot of the information that I got referenced, TDM, began with our mayor pro tem, Laura Kerner, in gathering this information. And so I owe her a lot of credit and thanks for what she did for getting this started, so.
Perfect.
And then Carol, I know we talked about the resolution. When we do the agenda, we may also want to include an item that talks about an update related to what we get from TDM and possibly how do we move forward on this also.
Perfect.
Good discussion, thank you all. And thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
You bet.
And with that, we'll move on to our second consideration item tonight. Oh, workshop item, sorry. First workshop item tonight is a wastewater treatment plant study. Follow on from the Garver study we saw earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I am Grant Watanabe, the Public Works Director for the city. And I'd like to introduce our Garver team. We have Greg Saboda, he's the project manager. We also have Chris Ackerman, project engineer, and Buddy Boyson, he's a process engineer. This is the second of two planned workshops as part of this study. During the first workshop, we took a detailed look at our master plan assumptions. We revised some of our future flow projections and we provided five different options to meet our ultimate build-out treatment requirement. During that workshop and shortly afterward, the council selected option one, which was expansion of a current wastewater treatment plant for further evaluation. And the goal of this workshop is to provide the results of that evaluation. We're also going to provide some revised cost estimates, some different alternatives for capital improvement phasing plans and to just give you an opportunity to ask any questions about the study. So we're not going to ask for any council action tonight. There's a slide, that'll actually, the last slide of this presentation will go over some of the next steps following the completion of this workshop. All right, and with that, I'll turn it over to Greg, thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager and City Staff for the opportunity to be here this evening to discuss the city's wastewater treatment plant. See if I can get this to work. Uh, no.
Right, one.
Someone take the clicker?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just realized I had.
See what happens.
May I have taken off the?
Can you, yeah.
I'll manage it, Scott. There you go.
Oh, okay, here we go. All right. So the goal of today's meeting is to present the findings of the city's wastewater treatment plant draft comprehensive report. As Grant alluded to, there are no actions or decisions that are being requested this evening. So as part of the discussion this evening and as Grant indicated, you know, if there's any questions, please ask them as we walk through this presentation and discussion. We will cover the review of the project progress, review the option one recommendations, review the recommended capacity improvements and rehab recommendations, discuss the wastewater treatment plant effluent golf course study, discuss project phasing alternatives, discuss updated opinion of probable construction costs, and then also discuss environmental, an environmental desktop review that was done as part of this study, and then next steps. So first, we will review the project progress status. So the goal of the comprehensive report, what was called TM3, is to summarize all the findings and recommendations of the study. So to date, we have performed the following as part of this study. So we reviewed the previous master plan work that had been done for the city. As part of that, we reviewed the land development plans. We performed a condition assessment of the existing wastewater treatment facility. We developed flow and load projections for the city's wastewater system. And then we evaluated five options to develop a path forward for the city to meet future needs. So this figure here shows the existing wastewater facility. And just as a kind of a high-level look at this, so the wastewater comes into the plant several ways. One of the ways is through the bottom of the hill lift station located here. That flow is then pumped up to the headworks facility. There is also another pipe coming into the headworks facility from the bottom part of this page. Comes into the headworks where the larger items, larger pieces of the wastewater are removed. From the headworks, it then flows by gravity to what is called the intermediate lift station or the in-yard lift station. And from this lift station, it is then pumped to your oxidation ditch or the biological process treatment unit. From this biological treatment unit, it then flows by gravity to these secondary clarifiers. There are two existing secondary clarifiers at the plant where the wastewater is, there's settling that takes place. The clarified water then flows by gravity to this chlorine contact basin where disinfection takes place. And then from here, it flows to the effluent pump station or the bottom of the hill irrigation pump station. And from there, it's pumped out to the golf course where eventually the wastewater, the treated wastewater is disposed. There's also sludge drying beds located at the treatment plant site, but have not been used for several years. So we presented the TM1 and TM2 findings to the city in early November. And as part of that presentation, in mid-November, we were giving notice from the city to continue in regards to the option one of the five options that were presented as part of that, that workshop. So option one evaluated the feasibility of improving the current wastewater treatment plant capacity to 0.5 MGD. This comprehensive report builds on this previous reports by investigating the infrastructure required to meet the projected flows and loads, refining the unit sizing and placement of process units there at the treatment facility, considering the buffer zone requirements. As you may recall, there were some questions in regards to buffer zone requirements at the treatment plant site. It included updating the preliminary cost estimates, construction cost estimates, and then also evaluating and looking to the project phasing possibilities for the, for the project. And then eventually looked at the desktop environmental review for the project area. So next, we will discuss the selected option one and the improvements to the existing wastewater treatment plant. So option one was the expansion of the. So, option one was the expansion of the city's existing wastewater treatment plant to meet the 100% of the projected required capacity. So, as you may recall, uh, the current treatment plant, uh, has the capability to treat approximately 0.35 MGD or 350,000 gallons per day. And option one is to increase that capacity to meet those future, uh, demands or do, uh, future flows, uh, increase that capacity to 0.5 MGD or 500,000 gallons per day. The existing wastewater treatment plant, as we determined, is part of TM one and TM two, has the space for these, uh, additional facilities, kind of taking into consideration those buffer requirements that, uh, we had talked about previously. So, the improvements that are, uh, included, uh, in regards to, uh, bringing this capacity up to 0.5 MGD is improvements to the effluent pump station, upgrading effluent piping, uh, roughly, uh, what is currently in place is eight inch to, and increasing that to 12 inch piping. Uh, installing, uh, fine bubble diffusion into your biological treatment unit, your current oxidation ditch, uh, the addition of a grit, uh, removal unit, a grit removal system, uh, the construction of a new aerated sludge holding tank, an ASHT, and then rehab and optimization of some of the existing units there at the treatment facility. So, we'll talk about, uh, each of these items here in, in a more detail on the next couple of, in the next couple of slides. So, first of all, um, upgrading the effluent pump station will improve operability and conveyance capability of that pump station in the city's system. The existing effluent pumps are not rated to handle the peak two hour flow event, uh, at the treatment plant. So, what does that involve? That involves reconfiguring the effluent pump station valving, uh, the way the valving is currently set up at that effluent, uh, pump station. That will allow the, uh, treated wastewater to be discharged to multiple locations. Those multiple locations are the blackjack and the live oak ponds there that are associated with the golf course facility. We also, uh, did some preliminary evaluation in regards to what does that look like in regards to pumping? And so, when it comes to pumping, there's pumping characteristics that are associated with pumps. And kind of preliminarily, this looks like the pumping that will be required. Those pumps will require 120 foot ahead, that's a pressure, uh, rating, uh, on those pumps. And then be able to pump a total of about 1,200 gallons per minute. So, what we currently are looking at are three new pump size at about 610 gallons per minute each, so. So, upsizing the effluent pipe to the blackjack pond will improve flow, energy and operability. As I noted, uh, what this involves is the, um, increasing, uh, or the new, or installing a new, uh, 12 inch diameter pipe in lieu of the existing pipe, which is, uh, at least from preliminary information, approximately an eight inch pipe. It seems to, it may vary in sizes along this, uh, route. So, this route really here, uh, see if I can get this to work. Here we go. Uh, what we're talking about here is about 8,700 feet of piping that again flows from the treatment facility or is pumped from the treatment facility to, uh, a connecting point that eventually then gets to the blackjack pond. So, again, that would be, uh, the piping improvements which helps the pumping capability and the ability to convey, uh, the treated wastewater flows, um, to the blackjack pond. Next item is upgrading the existing oxidation ditch process will allow to handle higher BOD loads. So, that's, uh, basically the constituents that are in the wastewater, the organic loading. Uh, this conventional activated sludge process provides for that capability. That conversion occurs by updating the existing aeration system. Uh, your current existing aeration system are surfaceator, surface aerators. And those, uh, would be replaced or we would be putting in retrievable fine bubble diffusers to improve that, uh, operation of that existing, uh, biological treatment unit. So, what are, what are the benefits of that? Uh, you have improved energy efficiency with that approach. It also gives you the flexibility of potentially removing these diffusers from time to time for in regards to maintenance and operational items. And it would continue to allow you to produce the high quality effluent that you're currently, uh, producing there at the treatment plant. Let's see what happened here. All right. Converting the existing oxidation ditch involves installing retrievable fine bubble diffusers, as I noted, to replace the current surface aerators as the primary means of aeration. So, you're the way the configuration of your existing, um, oxidation ditch allows for this to be, uh, implemented. Uh, again, for some kind of preliminary, uh, evaluation. Excuse me. Uh, we anticipate that, uh, that would be, um, required to install eight, uh, diffuser grids. Each of these diffuser grids would have approximately 186 diffusers associated with them for a total number of diffusers that would be placed into your existing oxidation ditch of about 1,500, uh, diffusers. So, these diffusers would be basically the replacement for those surface aerators and providing that diffuse air that provides for that biological treatment as part of the treatment process. So, in order to deliver that air for these, um, diffusers, multi, multi-stage centrifugal blowers and fine bubble diffusers will improve the oxygen transfer and turn down efficiency, uh, of your, uh, system. So, multi-stage blowers are designed to deliver air to these diffusers through a high-speed rotating, rotating impeller. The blowers, uh, would be as far as kind of preliminary layout. We would recommend that these blowers, uh, be located as near as possible to the existing oxidation ditch. That minimizes the piping length and therefore obviously minimizes cost in order to accomplish that. And we, uh, are recommending that these be placed in a, uh, blower building or in a bu, in a building, so. Uh, this building, uh, not only would, uh, house the, um, these blowers which are for the, um, diffusers at the oxidation ditch or the aeration basins, but it would also be utilized to house blowers for the air, air rated sludge holding tank that we'll talk about here in a minute. So, the building would kind of serve a dual purpose. Uh, this, uh, obviously, the building, uh, protects the blowers from, um, the elements and also helps to reduce the noise that potentially would be produced, uh, by these blowers. So, again, here on the right-hand side, you kind of see some preliminary sizing that we've done in regards to the blowers associated with the aeration basins, uh, what we are anticipating. Oh, thank you. Okay. Uh, are, uh, three blowers, two duty and one standby. And, uh, each blower would produce about 1,200, uh, SCFM, which is standard cubic feet per, uh, per minute of air, uh, to meet that 2,400 SCFM that we were talking about to be delivered in regards to the biological treatment for your wastewater treatment system. Next item that we will talk about is the implementation of an aeration basin system, uh, or, uh, which would be complemented with the addition of an, uh, upstream vortex grit removal system. So, this, um, grit removal system would be placed between your headwork system and your intermediate lift station. Uh, and this is obviously in front of your, what would be your aeration basin or your biological treatment unit. So, the vortex grit removal, uh, relies on selling as a primary means of grit removal and produces a high percentage of grit removal. So, grit is like a sand, uh, is what is in the wastewater. So, this unit, um, works to remove kind of those sand type particles from the wastewater treatment process. Uh, what does this do? It improves the efficiency of the aeration basin by removing those particles from the treatment, uh, flow uh, before they potentially become deposits in your oxidation ditch. Therefore, uh, allowing your, 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 your aeration basin, your biological treatment unit to work, um, better, more efficiently. Uh, the other, um, benefit that it provides to you is that it provides protection for, uh, your mechanical equipment that is downstream. Again, the sand particles create wear and tear on mechanical equipment that would be downstream, so. So, that this unit, and you're only really seeing here, what you see here in the photo is the actual vortex grit unit itself, but there's other, um, items that are, are associated with the entire system, which is a grit classifier, a grit concentrator and a grit washer. So, basically, it's just basically when you're, when, uh, when the, when you've removed the grit, it then cleans that grit, so in the end, you're kind of just left with those, uh, uh, sand particles and not a bunch of organic material, uh, associated with it, so. So, constructing an aerated sludge holding tank, the ASHT for temporary sludge storage will increase, um, operational flexibility. The aeration basin retrofit is projected to produce approximately 24,000 gallons, uh, per day of what we call waste activated sludge. Uh, that is in a, in a design max month, uh, condition. You wouldn't see that on an everyday basis, but that is kind of a, a higher level loading that you would see, uh, from the, uh, treatment process. Uh, the aerated sludge holding tank provides for a reduction, uh, in odors that are produced from what is typically digesting sludge. Uh, the ASHT, uh, design criteria would be coordinated with the sludge press that is currently being installed at the treatment facility. And it, uh, allows you to meet the TCQ requirements, uh, the regulation here that's shown the 217 to 50, uh, requirement in regards to providing intermittent operation of your sludge handling process there at the treatment plant. Uh, preliminarily, this, uh, what has been sized is roughly an 80,000 gallon, uh, tank, uh, for this aerated sludge holding tank. And that, in rough numbers, is about a 28 foot diameter by 18 foot tall tank. Again, this is preliminarily, these dimensions can be changed as you would get into detailed design and determine what works best, uh, for the city. Again, I noted the blowers earlier, uh, in regards to the blowers being located in the blower building. Uh, we are anticipating two blowers associated with this aerated sludge holding tank, one duty and one standby. That provides for the aeration for the aerated sludge holding tank. Uh, this, uh, this sizing, uh, what it does for you, it, it'll give you at a max month condition about three, a little more than three days of storage. So, kind of taking into account potentially weekends, uh, and intermittent operation of the sludge holding or even long weekends, right, when you have more than the three days of storage, so. Yes, sir.
I had a question, where, where does this fit in the process? Is this coming out of the clarifiers?
Uh-huh, yes, sir. Yep, it's the sludge, right? So, in the, in the clarifier, basically, you have the sludge that is settling, uh, in the clarifier. The sludge is taken out of the clarifier, would be pumped to your aerated sludge holding tank there where it is aerated. And then from the aerated sludge holding tank, it would be pumped to your, uh, your press that is currently being installed as part of a different project, so.
Is this just because of overflow or because you have fluctuations during the day of?
Uh, well, so, the, the treatment plant kind of determines, I guess, how often and when they want to remove sludge from the clarifier. So, that's kind of up to the city's operational mode of, if they want to do it on a more regular basis uh, or, uh, do it every two hours or six hours or whatever works best for them. And that all comes down to their, uh, operation and for them to get the best treatment that they can out of their wastewater system. So, I don't know if that answered your question or not.
It's probably basic questions, but it just helps me understand a little bit more. Because, uh, to me, it's almost what we're doing with the drying beds. Um, although it's a holding tank to get it through the screw press system.
Yeah. Well.
What about odor that comes, because, you know, we're putting the screw press system in to eliminate odor and now we're introducing somewhere where we're going to hold sludge.
Right, and that's the, that's the, the whole purpose of aerating the sludge so that you are basically minimizing those odors. You'll never completely get away, uh, from odors at a wastewater treatment plant, you know? But it, uh, greatly, uh, reduces the odors that would be produced. Versus if you just had a tank sitting there and had no aeration and that sludge was just kind of cooking, I guess you would say, in that tank, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. All right. The condition assessment revealed two facilities that had a medium risk classification that could be improved to add a layer of redundancy and resiliency. Uh, this is the intermediate, uh, in yard lift station and, uh, the bottom of the hill, uh, lift station. And so, in, in both of these cases, we would be replacing pumps. And actually, in the case of the intermediate lift station, we would be adding a third pump uh, to improve the capacity, uh, of these pumping locations uh, and give the city a little more flexibility or the, uh, plant staff a little more flexibility in the operation of these two, uh, lift stations. So, uh, another item that, uh, has, um, come up is in regards to the city, uh, issues with the blending of the effluent that's discharged from the wastewater treatment plant. So, this is treated wastewater, uh, that's discharged from the wastewater treatment plant, uh, to the golf course and the potable water that is purchased by the golf course. Obviously, this is happening during, uh, drier and harder times of the year. And so, when that combination happens, the amount of, um, of, uh, water that is then, uh, applied to the golf courses, uh, exceeds or in ca, or on occasions exceeds the application rate that the city is currently permitted, um, to apply. So, currently, uh, under bullet, uh, one here, the first bullet, you're under, you're operating under a TLAP permit, which is, uh, basically a Texas land application permit. You're taking your wastewater to the golf course in lieu of taking it to a creek, a river, a lake or, or something on that order. So, you're operating under a TLAP permit. Uh, you are, uh, associated with that. Uh, you have an application rate that is approved. Uh, the third bullet there, uh, basically, uh, indicates currently you have that 2.0 acre foot per acre that you're permitted for in regards to the, uh, application rate. But again, in certain instances during the year, the amount that's being applied is, is being, uh, is being exceeded. And so, uh, the city is under current discussions with, uh, TCQ in regards to how to potentially, uh, address that. What we had, um, discussed with the city, uh, again, is potentially what we are calling a golf course, uh, reuse study. And depending on the outcome of the discussions that are ongoing with TCQ is going back and potentially reassessing the available, um, uh, application area that the golf course may had. Uh, assessing the potential expected nutrient uptake of the vegetation there, uh, on the golf course. Uh, looking at the soil types and depths, uh, looking at kind of the slopes that the, um, the, um, treated wastewater is being applied to, to avoid oversaturation and, and runoff. And so, again, depending on kind of the results of the ongoing discussions, uh, this study would be potentially recommended as part of that if it becomes necessary, so.
Sir, I had a, a quick question on this. So, we're talking about the combinati, combining the effluent with potable water.
Mm-hmm.
And is that, is that what it's on the golf course? So, we water with the fluid and then they come back and water with potable water?
No, so, so what happens is that, uh, you're taking the treated wastewater, uh, from, uh, the treatment plant and it's going into the pond. And then the golf course is also purchasing potable water that's going into the pond. So, you have this combined, um, uh, water, right? That's then being applied to, to the golf course. So.
All right.
And, and, and really the way, uh, TCQ looks at that, they're looking at that application rate as if you were just applying treated wastewater, um, treated wastewater to the golf course. And in reality, when you have those situations in the hot, dry times of the year, it's really a combination, right, of treated wastewater and potable water which are, obviously have different water quality characteristics, so.
They realize that they were pumping potable water into the, the ponds.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if they're pumping into it, but it's being discharged into the pond, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so next, we will discuss project phasing alternatives and updates to the OPCC. So, two project phasing alternatives were considered in TM three. The figure below shows the single phase alternative. So, this, uh, approach would be where all the improvements that we just talked through would be implemented in a single phase of construction. Uh, again, providing the city, uh, with the ability to, uh, increase the treatment capacity at the plant from the 350,000 gallons per day to the 500,000 gallons per day. Those improvements, uh, are associated with the oxidation ditch being basically the diffusers and converting that to an aeration basin, the headworks, grit removal system, intermediate lift station improvements, the bottom of the hill lift station improvements, the aerated sludge holding tank, and then the effluent, uh, pump station and conveyance improvements that we noted. And again, if the, uh, the golf course study is necessary, that would be part of it. And again, if the, the golf course study is necessary, that would be part of it. The second, excuse me, option that was looked into was what we called the multi-phase alternative. That was developed, that included two phases, which addressed the short term and the long term needs. So this was broken down, phase one would consist of, and you can see it there on the right-hand side here, phase one would incorporate the effluent pump station and conveyance improvements, which includes that effluent pump station, the pipeline, the intermediate lift station improvements, and then the bottom of the hill lift station improvements. And then phase two would consist of the remaining improvements there at the treatment facility. So both alternatives were developed with the capacity triggers in mind. So as noted, basically, the, the current treatment plant has the ability to treat about 350,000 gallons per day. In the year roughly 2027, you will begin to exceed that capability of treating that 350,000 gallons per day. So both of these alternatives are set up such that you would have the improvements that you need implemented by 2027. So in, in the single phase alternative, you would have a longer design period and a longer construction period because all the improvements are being implemented in a single phase. And then in the multi-phase alternative, you would have shorter design periods, which is kind of the orange bar here, and then shorter construction periods, but you would have two of those, you know, phases, so. So this site plan here shows the, shows the proposed improvements and it shows all the improvements. The items that are shown in purple would be, would be the phase one if it was being done in a multi-phase approach. So again, this is associated here with the intermediate pump station, the effluent pump station, and the bottom of the hill lift station, which would be in phase one. And then the orange items here would be included in the phase two improvements, again, in the multi-phase approach. Or if you went the single phase approach, they would all be constructed as part of a single project. All right, we'll move on to the kind of OPCC. So as a reminder, which we talked about before, the cost estimates for this study utilize a class four estimate. So class four estimates are typically prepared for strategic business planning, strategic planning, preliminary budgeting. And so as part of this, and this is the same information that we presented before, there are some unknown site conditions that we utilize percentages for as part of the OPCC development. And then we utilize project contingencies and markups for the various items that are associated with projects. These are all typical items that we use on an everyday basis in regards to estimating construction costs for projects. And so these markups and contingencies are a factor of about 1.8 on the raw OPCC. And then we also included a percent here for what would be professional engineering services for a total program cost that we'll talk about here in a minute. So we reviewed the cost estimate for option one that was developed in TM2 and updated the cost information with refined information in regards to the continual development of option one, as well as obtaining updated information from suppliers and vendors in regards to what materials and equipment pricing has, has been doing in the recent months. And so this is the, what you see here is the kind of unit costs for each of the areas that we've noted that would be improvements needed for the treatment plant. And so this raw subtotal comes to roughly 4.4 million dollars. So now we'll look at it as conducting the improvements in a single phase would streamline the implementation. So here, what you see here is what was on the previous page. Now you see that this number is now 5.1 million instead of 4.4 million. And so what has been done here is that we've escalated the price to the midpoint of construction, which is a normal practice because that's how a contractor would approach a project in regards to what is this, this project is a, you know, an 18-month duration, he's, he's estimating his cost or developing his cost to the midpoint of construction. So basically at the nine-month point, if it was an 18th month construction duration. So that's why you would see the difference here from the previous slide, 4.4 million to 5.1 million. We then incorporated the percentages for the various unknown items that we talked about, which then equated to the raw OPCC. And then when you incorporate the construction markup and contingency, that number increased at roughly to, or that was roughly 6 million for a total project cost of about 13.7 million when you incorporate the engineering services. The total program cost for the single phase approach is approximately 16.5 million dollars.
Sir, I had a quick question on this.
Uh huh.
So in your experience, so this is, this is really the worst-case scenario.
We hope. If, if we, if we knew what the economy would be doing.
Right.
You know, yes, we would say that, but.
So in your experience, I mean, for the unknowns.
Mm-hmm.
Do you normally see the total cost going out for unknowns or is there a percentage? Just in your experience, I mean, I'm not holding you to it, just so we have an idea.
I mean, I think, you know, the numbers that we're using here are, are typical numbers that we would utilize in any OPCC development. We, we hope to think that, you know, the numbers that we are presenting here are numbers that, like you would say, are on the higher end of what we would anticipate, but none of us can predict what the market's going to do and especially what has happened in the last couple of years, year and a half, or whatever you want to say. So, so I don't know if that answers your question or not, or maybe.
Kind of, and then also with the contingencies, because 80% contingency, I mean, we're, we're almost doubling the.
Yep, yep.
And do you see contingencies normally getting used at an 80% level or?
Well, so these are, the, the real contingency here is really in the, in the construction contingency right here, the 30%. And also in this market pricing contingency of 10%. And I will say that in my experience, that in the past, we probably did not utilize this market pricing contingency, but because of what has happened in the last year and a half or so, we have not, we have now started incorporating this into our estimates. So these, this, these numbers here, this 30% construction contingency that you see and this markup, or, or, excuse me, this mobilization markup of 5% and this contractor overhead, overhead profit of 20%, these three numbers are all typical numbers that we would use at this stage in the, in the development of an OPCC. So these are not anything different than we were doing five years ago, generally speaking, so. Now this market contingency is, or, excuse me, market pricing contingency is something that we have been doing recently, so.
So, so follow-up question, you know, on the contingencies and what we've historically seen impacting that. I guess one of the things when the mayor was asking his questions that came to my mind is, you know, a lot of entities similar to us or bigger have been deferring projects because of all the uncertainty in the economy and the escalations of costs and things like that. And, and so it seems like there's some risk in the numbers of when the market, so to speak, starts saying, well, now we're behind schedule on getting up to our capacity that the, basically the construction people and the equipment people are going to get slammed and that's going to have an upward pressure on prices. So do you still feel confident that this is worst-case scenario or do we just really have to be, you know, know that when we actually get down to start getting down to brass tacks and pricing this thing, that it could be this kind of range or higher when we actually go to let a construction contract?
You know, I guess I wouldn't use the term worst-case scenario, you know? Again, I, I do think that we, we feel like we have taken into account kind of what the market pricing has been doing. We've gotten, you know, recent cost information that we've incorporated in, at this level of the, of the project. And we've incorporated this 10% marking pricing contingency. So we believe that we have a good, a good number here, but again, I wouldn't necessarily call it a worst-case scenario because again, just don't know what the market's going to do, right? I mean, if we, probably a lot of cities, if they had their druthers, they would have bid their project two years ago or three years ago, right? And probably could have got it for about, you know, 75% or 25% less than what you're paying today or 50% less than what you're paying today just because of what has happened in the market, so, you know.
But I, I guess what I hear you saying, that you've already baked some of that risk into your numbers.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, we are using recent cost information in regards to this, these OPCCs that you're seeing up here, so. Okay, we also talked about the multi-phase alternative approach. So in this case, there would be the first phase of the project and here you can see what those costs would be in that first phase, this effluent pump station, bottom of the hill lift station and in yard lift station improvements. Those raw subtotals about 2.1 million. We have the unknown factors in here that are incorporated that gets you to a raw OPCC of about 2.8 million. Then the construction markup and contingency for a total project cost of about $5 million. Incorporating the engineering services gives you a total program cost for phase one of the multi-phase approach of about $6 million. The phase two focuses on the enhancement of the biological treatment system and the sludge processing. So these are the items that would be incorporated into the phase two improvements of the multi-phase approach. That cost is approximately 3.3 million dollars. Again, the same markups and so forth get you to a, a, a total project cost of about $9 million with engineering services fee. That gives you a total program cost of about 11.2 million dollars. So when comparing the two alternatives, the single phase approach is more cost-effective. However, if development plans or the number of connections needed changes, a multi-phase approach may be a better option for the city. You can see, you know, the, the side-by-side comparison here of the single phase approach, that total cost, program cost is about 16.5 million. The multi-phase approach total program cost is about 17.2 million dollars, so a difference there of about $720,000 between those two approaches.
Could you help me understand a little bit better, like what the drivers are for that $721,000 difference? Is it just inflation or are there?
Basically, so it's the pricing to the midpoint of construction. So you've got two different construction phases when the multi-phase approach. And so when you look at that escalation in regards to, to the midpoint of construction, that's basically where that difference in costing comes from.
Okay, another question I have that could affect pricing, like not being familiar with this type of equipment and stuff. What, what are the challenges of getting commitments from the fabricators of the equipment to have it available at a price when you have a long-term project like this?
Yeah, so what we, what we would do is, you know, if we were to move into the next phase of the project, is continue to have discussions with the manufacturers, the suppliers of this equipment. And, you know, this would be obviously coordinated with, with the city staff, but what we have now seen being done is that a lot of entities and we have supported entities in doing this is basically beginning to pre-procure equipment or materials before you potentially have a general contractor selected for the project. So that these long lead items that already, you already, you know, know they're going to be a long lead, you can start getting those into the process of getting those delivered so that when you have a general contractor on the site, you, or, you know, not necessarily the materials are going to be there, but they're in the process of being built and then potentially delivered in lieu of starting when you only have the general contractor on the site, so.
Okay, so I've heard of that, that strategy. That, that would make the city staff a lot more integral into the management of that project. There are a lot of, more of the risk of the overall project would be borne by the city, correct, versus passing that on to a contractor?
Yeah, you, you are taking on a little more risk with that approach because it's, it's an easier approach just to put it all on the contractor. Mr. Contractor, you go and do all of this, basically get all the equipment, get all the materials, get it all installed. When you take this pre-procurement approach, you, us are taking on a little more risk because there's going to, generally speaking, how it's been done recently is that the, the equipment is procured, there's a shop drawing process to, to create drawings of what this equipment is going to be. So it allows that process to start moving forward, but there has to be that coordination eventually between the general contractor and that supplier. And so that's where there becomes a little more risk involved in that approach.
So who owns the risk of the end product meeting the design requirement?
Uh.
When, when you do pre-procure, when, because what I hear is a scenario, I've seen it, where you buy the equipment, say, here, install my equipment and out comes the other end and somehow you're not getting the, the specification that you intended and you got kind of this kind of an accountability situation.
Right, yep, yep.
Sorry for, if anybody can't, can't see that, I apologize, but it's, it becomes very ambiguous who's, who's on the hook for meeting the specs.
Yes, yes, very good point, very good question. So just at, at this stage, what I would suggest is that the city potentially doesn't actually purchase the equipment. What eventually happens is that you're basically pre-procuring this equipment. There is a, like, a materials list that is provided of what is going to be, be provided by this manufacturer or this supplier. That documentation is, is then put into the general contractor bid documents and the general contractor becomes responsible for the ultimate installation and making sure that all the pieces and items are there for the proper installation of that piece of equipment, so. But there's different ways to do it. That's just, you know, talking about it here this evening, so. All right, moving on, we'll talk about some environmental, discuss the environmental desktop review findings. So the environmental evaluation of the project, which included the pipeline route that we discussed a little earlier, noted the close proximity to, to Sibyllo Creek and a potentially jurisdictional water of the US. So depending on how much disturbance there is as part of really the pipeline project or the pipeline portion of the project, we potentially then get into some different areas of what may be required into core permitting. Those limits really here, as noted on the screen here, are something that's more than 0.1 acre and you're getting a nationwide permit, which can typically be required, acquired in about 90 days. If we get into where we are, the impacts are exceeding 0.5 acres, then it gets into an individual permit and much longer duration in regards to permitting in regards to the jurisdictional waters of the US. So in that design, it would be endeavored such that we would impact 0.5 acres or less so that we do not get into this individual permit that would potentially be required by the corps, so. But we don't know that until we kind of get into the detailed design and looking at the actual layout of that piping alignment, so. the actual layout of that piping alignment, so. All right, the alignment of the pipeline improvements from the wastewater treatment plant to the Black Jack Pond is located within the floodplain coordination, within the floodplain. Coordination with the floodplain administrator will be required. So what you see here again is this, I guess now maybe purple alignment, pink before that. And here is the floodplain. And so based on this routing, there would be coordination required with the floodplain administrator as well as complying with water pollution abatement plan requirements that would be in compliance with the Edward Edwards Aquifer rules. We don't anticipate any significant issues with that type of permitting in regards to this portion of the project. Next, the evaluation of the threatened and endangered species in the area found that there should not be any impacts to federally listed species. However, further investigation will be required to determine if there could be impacts to state listed species. If there is impacts to state listed species, then we will have coordination with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department implementing best management practices. That coordination with them or that permitting process typically takes about 45 days. So that usually is something like, you know, you can't cut this vegetation down this time of the year because there could be birds, certain birds or whatever in this in this area and so forth. So again, don't view this as a big concern in regards to the permitting of this project. The evaluation of cultural and historical sites found that there was one archaeological site located within the study area. We don't have a definitive location yet on this site, but it is within our project area and it is generally along our pipeline route. So there's already been a historical site that is noted in the project area from the desktop review that was done. So the proposed project will require coordination with the THC, Texas Historical Commission, to comply with section 106 of the historic National Historic Preservation Act. And so depending on the findings of that, that may require that a qualified archaeologist, 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 I can't say that, be be coordinated with and a survey done and then show compliance with that requirement as far as section 106 of the THC. That coordination and permitting should take somewhere on the order permitting wise of about 90 to 120 days. Again, don't see a significant impact in regards to that. So based on the desktop environmental review, does not appear to be major environmental concerns associated with the project. However, it's, you know, very prudent that the as the project progresses forward, that we stay on top of these permitting requirements, the authorizations and environmental evaluations that are required, staying on top of that schedule so that this portion of the project does not affect the actual wastewater treatment plant improvements and those those improvements being constructed. Getting back to the alignment of the pipe to the golf course and the proximity of the cultural historical site, again, obviously you've had a pipeline that's already been put in place, so there is a, you know, disturbed area already. But because there is a disturbed area doesn't mean that new areas potentially aren't identified as part of the process. So I guess if there is a risk, that would be one of the higher risk of the of the actual project. So with that, I think that's all I've got unless you've got additional questions for me.
All right, last slide here. This one covers next step. So this presentation represents really the last major deliverable for this study. If there's any additional info or analysis that you'd like staff to look into, we can continue to do that and we can bring this back with a potentially another workshop. If not, then what I'd like to do is come back at the next council meeting with an agenda item, asking for a decision on whether we want to pursue the single-phase expansion alternative or a multi-phase. Our current treatment capacity trigger of 0.35 MGD, which according to our projections would happen in the 2027 timeframe. If growth doesn't occur as we predict and that happens in maybe the 2030 timeframe, then we could potentially expand it and have three or four steps along the way. But we just have to keep that trigger in mind. Yes.
Go ahead.
It'd be a series of separate projects, yes. Yes. Yes, and as we progress from one project to the other, we'd be here to monitor actual growth rates. There may be changes in future developments, maybe they're not going to connect to this city sewer system, maybe they're going to go step deck. So maybe our top line ultimately is not 0.5 MGD anymore, maybe it comes down. So there are benefits to looking at a multi-phase approach.
I think we also need to consider the amount of people that we have currently on our wastewater system that are going to be bearing, if you will, the cost of this and just think that through.
Sir.
As as far as like looking at the the phased approach, I guess I think it'd be helpful to see, you know, a risk analysis for both the financial and non-financial aspects. And I'm not talking about, you know, real down in the weeds, but you know, what what benefits or challenges does each approach have, single-phase versus multi-phase type of a project? Just so that it gives a more clear picture of what what the value of that additional $700,000 is, you know, so that I think that would be helpful in making a decision around that. As as far as the rate impact, I mean, I think that that's that's for real. The most relevant thing to me there would be to really, and it was kind of if I understood the point related to phasing, that if if that's a growth driven thing, because we're constantly refining our growth projections of how many accounts we're going to, how many connections we're going to add to the system and and whether that that would affect but when when those impacts hit, obviously, the closer to the time when you're going to actually add the connections, the better to provide a means of spreading that out. And then I think the rest of it is just to take the rate shock out of it by financing, some sort of financing approach.
Yes, sir, some of the proposed improvements are immediate needs. For example, Greg mentioned we have difficulty meeting our peak to hour flow to get effluent out of the plant. So some of those upgrades are immediate and some of them are growth related. So monitoring our our growth rates will be key in trying to decide when we have to design and when we have to construct those improvements.
I had the same concern that Chesley brought up. It was really tying it to the utility rate study. So really, it's the impact that we're going to have on our wastewater fees and determining where this fits in the process so that, you know, as we're making a decision on single-phase, you know, one-phase or multi-phase and determining the impact, we're going to make that decision. But over here, I'm concerned of what's the impact to the wastewater fee. I make, am I explaining it well or?
Well, I mean, we currently don't even cover that, so we need to fix that already. So we already need to raise the rates to fix that. So we're talking about raising the rates to just get us level, if you will, or, you know, and then raise the rates again to do needed infrastructure. Not saying I'm against the needed infrastructure by any means, but I think it's critical, again, I'll say the communication of how this goes about, how we finance it if we do, and the impact that we're going to have on ratepayers because it is, I don't know the exact number, but it's not a large percentage of the city currently that are on wastewater. So I think all of those things need to be considered when we're talking about how this is going to happen.
Okay, um, let me see. Maybe six months ago, we had Raffeta, let's come in and do a rate study presentation. They did provide some preliminary proposed wastewater rates. Those rates were based on what our current CIP is, which was construction of a new plant.
Keeps helps put it in perspective.
Okay.
So let me ask a question, if y'all don't mind, Council, so I make sure I understand. When we bring this back, we may not bring it back at the next council meeting, depending on on what our lending. But it sounds like to me you're wanting to to have a better understanding of the two different phasings relative to that cost being amortized and how that may impact the rate, right? And so so it's it's more than just bringing back a question of of which phase do you want? We need a little more data so that they can make a more informed decision of what what that rate's going to be amortized over 20, 30 years or whatever it is. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what I was looking for, yes.
Understand.
Okay. I'm saying, once we get to that point where we're able to make a decision, we do have funds to start the design for wherever that first phase is of the expansion. Once that decision is made, then we'd select a consultant, start doing the plans, specifications and the estimates. These would be much more refined estimates. Greg mentioned that these are level four estimates, these are just for planning level purposes. Once we have an actual consulting, putting pen to paper and doing a quantity take off of the materials, we'll have a better idea of what the actual estimates are going to be.
Close a comment, for for me, anyway, as I just, you know, was sitting here thinking that when I first came on to council most of seven years ago, you know, we had a presentation that said we were already behind the curve on on getting, you know, some kind of plan together to to get this done. So I think we just have to to bear that in mind, that we are, you know, 2026 is not that far away.
I think, or I guess I'm not understanding that anybody on here is suggesting we want to drag our feet. I think it's just deciding if we can phase this to meet even just slightly future needs and then amortize it to have less of an impact on people. But I don't think anybody or I haven't understood that any council member wants to stop or drag it out or not do something, so following up.
Okay, thank you. And then if all goes well, designs for at least the first phase or the first part of the first phase would be done by the end of this fiscal year and we'd be looking to go into construction for whatever those improvements are next fiscal year. All right, well, that was the last slide. Are there any questions from either me or the Garver team?
That was a pretty thorough presentation, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Grant. We'll move on to our next workshop item, which is reaching a population of 10,000 statutory provisions. And Tobin, do you want to kick this one off?
Yes, Mayor and Council, if you don't mind, I'll tee it up real quick. Understanding this is our second late night in a row, brevity's our friend here, so I'll be quick. The end goal of this this conversation is we need the city to update the official population, right? This all started with a conversation, the branding committee, about how do we update our population signs, which are regulated, not regulated, but posted and and put in by Text Dot. Historically, the city has used a resolution process. I gave you an example of of the last one in 2012 that was done, that details the means and methods that have historically been used. For whatever reason, we haven't updated our official population since 2012. We reached out to Text Dot, they're ready to mobilize to update the signs based off the the decennial census of 2020. But even if you look at those numbers, the 2021 and 2022 estimates have already changed significantly. So we're planning on bringing a resolution for y'all to consider at a future agenda with a couple different means and methods of how you may want to consider determining the official population. But as I was working through this with our city attorney, he was astute enough to remind me that, hey, there's several statutes that kick into place once you reach that 10,000 threshold. So I made the decision to ask Dan to prepare a presentation just so council can understand things that may come our way once we hit that threshold of 10,000. I don't see any huge red flags, but I think it's it's best for us all to understand so that you can make an informed decision. So that's the purpose of tonight's presentation.
Good evening, Council. And the brevity message was for me, Tobin, and I got it loud and clear. I I understand. I only have seven slides. They have a lot of subparts, but it's only 11 slides. What I think you'll find to is that, so we did a lot of redistricting for for cities. A lot of cities had to go through that process. If you're a single member district, you got to, every time there's a census, you go through this to make sure that your your city's apportioned correctly. And and what what I found in doing that, because we did cities across the state with a demographer partner that we had, and some cities don't, they wait for that census to come out, you know, in 10 years and then they change. And I had a couple of cities that went over that officially went over the 10,000 at the time of the census. And so and they were, they were thinking they weren't going to hit that number and so they really hadn't done any work ahead of time to to be prepared for what what that may or may not mean for them. And then, you know, you had other cities, you know, you, as y'all know, you have to be 5,000 to be home rule. We actually have some cities that dropped below that and they were panicking, thinking, oh, my gosh, we're not home rule anymore. But you never lose that status. And so it's it's just, it is interesting and and while the census is every every 10 years and it gives us that population, we know that it's not completely accurate. The Texas State Demographer does estimates on an ongoing basis. The new estimates are are should be available any any time now. But, you know, I just pulled up yours and so the census has you at 9,833. In seven, July of '21, the state demographer estimated it was 10,431. And then in January of '22, the state demographer had you estimated at 10,630. So they should be releasing a new estimate. But as Tobin clearly said, correctly stated, you'll determine what your your official population is as the as the governing body. Just as an example, I I know of a couple of cities whose they're, the state demographer has them around 4,200 or 300, they're about to have elections to become home rule because they say, nope, we are 5,000. And there's some, there's some accepted methodologies you can use with your utility accounts to be able to do a population estimate at the local level despite whatever the state demographer might say. And so that's how those cities do that. So anyway, that's just a little bit of background. The reason why it matters is for whatever reason, our legislature, because I've quit trying to guess why our legislature does things they do. So for whatever reason, they use 10,000 for a lot of things. And I'm going to go through many. There are more than what we're going to cover here. They just are not, they also like brackets. And so there are some that even if they use 10,000 as a as a as a determining population, they would not simply be applicable to Fair Oaks Ranch. And I even found another one going through this and and you'll see, I didn't even have time to remove it, I just lined through it, so. So let's just go ahead and go through this. These are small and I'm going to go through each one of these. So you'll see that a lot, a lot of the 10,000, a lot of the regulations deal with your employees and benefits that your employees are entitled to for when you hit this population. Now, some of them are permissive, though. Some of them are may and some of them are shall. And I'll try to make sure I point those out. So in a municipality with a population of 10,000 to 40,000, each member of the fire police department, y'all only have the police department, is entitled to receive a salary of at least $165 a month. Hey, you know, I think we're, I think we're okay on this one, but.
She's getting a raise.
It's actually a law. Secondly, so mandatory longevity pay. So in a municipality with a population 10,000 or more, each member of your police department is entitled to receive in addition to all other money, longevity pay of $4 a month for each year of service in the department, not to exceed 25 years. Also, section, and these are in the local government code. Also section, and these are in the local government code, for, for those of us who are in the room who are really nerdy and want to get into this stuff, local government code, and I'll tell you, they, it does change here in a bit, and I'll tell you when we change codes. So, 141034 gives a right to petition to increase salaries. So, the qualified voters can decide that they want to give the police a raise. They have to state the amount of the proposed minimum salary for each rank, pay grade, or classification. They have to designate five qualified voters to act as a committee of the petitioners authorized to negotiate with the governing body. And they have to have at least 25% of the voters who, a, a number equal to 25% of the voters who voted in the most recent municipal election. But if they do that, they can get it on a ballot. And the ballot would dictate as to what that salary would be. In 1420015, this has to do with hours of labor and vacation for members of fire and police departments. And basically, what it says is that it, it kind of defines how many hours that, what's the maximum hours that your police can work without it being overtime? And then it dictates as to what hours count towards that overtime, that overtime number. And the thing about it is, it's a, it is, in some respects, it's different than the Fair Labor Standards Act, the FLSA. And so, on this one, if y'all do establish a population more than 10,000, what we'll do is, Clarissa Rodriguez with my office will work with Joanna to make sure that we give you guys exactly what you have to do versus what you're, you are able to do. And we'll make sure that we're clear on all these things. Because it, it is going to change some things, definitely in your police department. 142016, in the local government, still, local government code, this is the use of compensatory time by members of the fire and police department. And this is only applicable for cities who don't have civil service under chapter 143, which we'll talk about here in a second. You don't, just to be, just to be clear, you don't have civil service adopted here. But this just talks about how they are able to use compensatory time, how they can accrue it and how it can be used, that they're entitled to do that. 143.002, so, this is the civil service chapter, and I, and I didn't put a lot of details on this, but you have to reach 10,000 before you can have an election to have civil service. And the way that that works is, now, some of these statutes, and this is one of those, some of these statutes dictate what population is, estimate is used for doing this. And so this one only talks about, it has to be the federal census, or it has to be the state demographer. Those are the only two that would trigger 143. And I think the reason why they're so specific is because it's another one of those that has petition rights. And so, a city can either decide that it wants to call on an election to move to civil service rules for its police department, or 10% of the qualified voters, so not 25% on this one, like it was for if they want to change the salaries, 10% of the qualified voters of the last election can bring, qualified voters of the last election can bring forward a petition, requiring you to have an election to, to move to civil service. When a city moves to civil, now, I, I've been on both sides of this, and in, in, in the private, I mean, in the public sector, when I was a city attorney, and then moving to private sector, we have stuff all over the board. We have collective bargaining, we have meet and confer, we have civil service, then we have cities that don't have any of those things. If and when that ever comes about, it's, it's really, you know, it's, it's a good process, it's a solid process, and this city and any other city, I mean, we can have cities ready if they ever decide to move toward that, or if they're, they, they receive that petition to move to civil service. All it does is it establishes certain rights for members of the police department. Labor, it's labor rights. I think that, oh, the last one on this one is, well, there's a, so, there's a couple of, so, chapter 150 of the local government code, this is referencing specifically 150.002, but it's really all of 150, is dealing with if you are over 10,000 but not civil service, not chapter 143, then this 150 applies. And the reason for that is because otherwise, these provisions are found in chapter 143. So they, they, they added this chapter for cities who aren't 143 civil service but are still over 10,000. And what it has to do with is wearing your uniform. So while in uniform or in, or on active duty, an employee of the fire police department of a municipality may not engage in political, political activity relating to a campaign for an elective office. And then it says, while out of uniform and not on active duty, you know, they can do so, and you can't prohibit them from doing so. So, when you're under 10,000, I, I guess it doesn't matter. But when you're over 10,000, you can't have those provisions. And some cities do, in a personnel policy, they try to limit employees' rights to engage in political activity. But this is specific to police and fire, so. Okay, so, those are the fun ones. The rest of these are random. And, and I always wonder, I always want to know the story behind, so what city got this legislation? So appropriation to hospitals established by donation. I only, I'm only going to read this because it's interesting. It says, it's very specific. If a fund of at least $50,000 is left by will or otherwise to establish and maintain a hospital in a municipality with a population, population of at least 10,000, the governing body municipality, in which the municipality, where the hospital's located, may make an appropriation to the hospital in an amount that the governing body considers proper to provide hospitalization and medical and surgical services for indigent residents of the municipality or county who are sick or wounded. It's very specific, but if anybody is doing your planning, your future planning, and you want to leave $50,000 or more, just know, if you specify it for this, we actually have a statute. And then, 265001 has to do with, you know, actually establishing a hospital. If you want, if y'all decide you want to do a hospital, I don't know. If you want to, you can. And you can do it jointly with the county. Pick, pick a county, you've got three, I didn't do that. I did, I promise I didn't do, they're like... It's the next, then, okay. Yeah, there we go. So this one, so this one, like, like the other, that, now, now I'm lost. Okay, so, so there's a tax that utilities pay, tax on gross receipts, and it goes to each person who is, receives those, the bills here. And this one's interesting because this is specific to the federal census. So this one, even if you say you're over 10,000, this is not going to require this of the utility companies until the next federal census comes out. But it's actually going to be beneficial because 1.97, 997% of the gross receipts from business done in an incorporated city having a population of 10,000 or more, according to the last federal census next preceding the filing of the report. So, there's a tax imposed on each utility company that makes a sale to an ultimate consumer in an incorporated city or town. So the tax is going to go for you, it's going to change from 1.07 to 1.997 eventually. And that is in the tax code.
Dan, so is that, that a utility that operates in our city? Or is that our city department utility?
No, that's a city that makes a sell, so you don't charge yourself a, it's, it's going to be whoever's, it's, you're going to be the electric gas that makes a sale to a consumer in the, in the city. They're going to have that tax on that.
So is that in addition to franchise fees that they pay the city? Who, who does that tax get remitted to?
It gets to you. It's your tax. It's just like when we...
And that is in addition to the franchise fees?
If you, think, think about when we, when we did the MDD, that's the last time you dealt with this tax. Because when we created the MDD, you had to levy that additional tax. It does, it's not automatic. It's one that a city or a government entity must choose to levy. It's a sales tax. And in, on the MDD, we elected to let, to, to do that in addition to the regular percentage. It's specific to utilities. 26177 is in the health and safety code, and this has to do with water pollution control duties of a city. And what, it, it's kind of interesting because it says that a city may establish a water pollution control and abatement program for the city. And the reason why I included this one was because where y'all sit with your, with your underground water sources and stuff, this, I, I could see this coming into play. And it says if the watershed water quality assessment reports required by 260135 or other commission assessments or studies identify water pollution attributable to non-permitted sources in a city that has a population of 10,000 or more, after providing you time to correct it, they may require the city to establish a water pollution control and abatement program. Not saying y'all have an issue here, but once you pass 10,000, it's a, it, the TCUQ then has authority to come in if we're not monitoring, which I think you are, but if, if you're ever not monitoring that and they get a bad report, they have authority that they wouldn't otherwise have. And it's silent on what 10,000 controls. Most of these are, most of these just say 10,000. They don't say according to the federal census or according to the state demographer. So you have certain exemptions from dog and cats, this is bad news for the dogs and cats. It really don't, don't know how much it affects y'all, but you are, we're exempt from dog and cat sterilization laws under 10,000. It's mandatory for cities that are over 10,000. And so, there's a whole, I'm not going to, if you're interested, it's 828 in the health and safety code, you're no longer exempt from those. So, while it won't affect the city directly, anybody who operates and adopts animals into, into Fair Oaks Ranch will have to abide by the health and safety code. So it, it's going to impact them. So if there's, whoever is, organization, organizations who have pets for adoption for Fair Oaks Ranch, you're over 10,000, those dogs and, those dogs and cats will have to be sterilized, you'll have to provide proof of sterilization. There's a whole laundry list of things in the health and safety code that would become applicable. So what we can do is, is work with staff to identify any of those organizations who are operating in this area and adopting animals in here, so that once y'all adopt that, we need to send them notice that, hey, just by the way, we're now over 2,000, 828's going to apply. They're going to be familiar with it because they, if they're an organization, they're adopting, you know, if they, if they operate out of Bernie, for example, they already have to do that in Bernie, because it's, they're well, they're 20,000, so. All right, so, 420, 42107 is, is a, is a big one. This was a big one from our city elsewhere that passed that threshold, because what it does is it has to do with how boundaries and precincts are drawn in counties. And this is interesting for you because you're in three counties. And what it says is, a commissioner's court may not establish a county election precinct containing territory inside a city with a population of 10,000 or more and unincorporated territory outside that city unless the commissioner's court determines that either of the two areas cannot constitute a separate election precinct of suitable size or shape that contains permissible number of voters, or cannot be combined with other territory on the same side of the city boundary to form an election precinct of a suitable size or shape that contains a permissible number of voters without causing another election precinct to fail to meet those requirements. To summarize, they have to look at their precincts that cross boundaries, right? So they have to, a county's going to have to look at any precincts that go from outside the city to inside the city, and they're going to have to look at that to see if those can be either one or the other as opposed to splitting voters across that boundary. Because once you're over 10,000, the, the preference is that you have your own precincts wherever possible. So, that's going to fall to the counties and whoever oversees the elections and the drawing of those precinct boundaries to deal with. But it also depends on when they, we redraw them. So if we reach out to them and say, hey, we're over 10,000 now, they're going to be like, hey, that's great, we're going to redraw them again in nine years. I mean, I don't know, I'm just making that up, so, and I'm, which I shouldn't do since I know this is being livestreamed. But, it should never make stuff up. Bottom line, we'll work with a county to make sure that those precincts are drawn correctly. And it's, and it really falls to the counties more so than it does to the city, but it is something that will change, likely change your, it could change your precincts, which county precinct you put in. Second one there, prevailing wage. So once you're over 10,000, this is out of the government code, prevailing wa, raid, why do they put those words beside each other? Prevailing wage rates to be paid by contractors. So in our contracts, we can require people we contract with to do city business to pay prevailing wage rates. If they fail to do so, there's a provision in the government code that says that they can be fined $60 a day for each worker, for each calendar day that they fail to do that. That comes to the city, and, but only cities that are 10,000 or more can collect that penalty. So that's what that's about. 141008 allows you to do automatic dues deductions for your police officers if they have an association that they pay dues to. And then, the last one is, I included simply because I know that y'all are adjacent to federal property. So if you're fewer than 10,000 inhabitants, you can purchase any real property, including improvements that the federal government offers to sell you, and you can repurpose it and, and, and sell it. If, once you're over 10,000, that's no longer an option for them to, to, to do that for you. They can't just sell it to you for any purpose such as that. Not a big deal. That's all of them that I think are applicable. I think the big thing, the big takeaway for you is that when you make this decision to post that it's over 10,000, we'll work with Joanna to make sure that we check all the boxes we need to check with your, with your, it's going to mostly be for the police employees. So, any questions?
Thank you, Dan.
All right, you bet.
The next workshop item that we have is a discussion regarding the city's Fourth of July celebration. And Clayton, you mind if I kick off?
Sure.
Portions of this?
Yeah, no doubt.
So last year, we had a Fourth of July celebration scheduled at the club that was canceled due to the drought. Well, we, we canceled fireworks, ended up canceling the entire celebration because without fireworks, there was no need to have a celebration, even though it's still our nation's birthday. The, so what we took a look at this year is, we do something different and still provides some impact. And what I'd really focused on was a drone show. I mean, I've seen these and thought it was pretty unique, and it maybe could provide something in lieu of fireworks that we could schedule, that, you know, if we do have another drought this summer, that we'd still be able to drive forward with the drone show. But I believe the, the drone show is probably out of our price range. And I believe Clayton came up with a laser show.
Yeah, we have...
As an opportunity.
Correct. And we have a few different options that we can talk about.
Drone shows, so they come out with, I don't know, like, 300 or 400 drones. They're all, they're synchronized, and they can do them, fly them, and they have lights on them, they'll do shapes, and they change colors, and...
Never saw one. Sounds interesting.
TikTok. I think I saw it at the Olympics, at the opening ceremonies, I think they had it...
That's right.
And so, bottom line, asked, well, I went to Tobin and asked, hey, can we look at options? And so I think Clayton's looked at those options now. Now, I don't believe we've done anything as far as coordination of an event, but really what we're looking for is if we were going to go forward and coordinate an event for this Fourth of July, what would be the best opportunity that we could utilize part of either fireworks or a replacement for fireworks? How's that?
Correct.
All right.
So, yeah, that's, that's basically exactly what we're going to discuss today. We're going to go over a few different options. I'll just discuss briefly the traditional fireworks, the drone shows, like the mayor mentioned, a laser light show, and then kind of a combination of both lasers and fireworks. And, yeah, just like the mayor said, we're just trying to gain some... And yeah, just like the mayor said, we're just trying to gain some direction on the preferred option, because when we get into a booking perspective, we really need to, according to basically all the vendors, you really need to book something like this by early March in order to get their services for July. So that's kind of why we're bringing this forward to you tonight, timing wise. So with that said, I'll go ahead and, and get started. So as previously mentioned, the drone show, we did look into that. The drone show would typically last about 10 to 12 minutes. From what I learned in speaking with the vendors, that's, that's really driven by battery capacity of the drones. So that's typically, it would require additional drones if you wanted to have another show. And you're looking at a cost of about 40,000 for something that, you know, for like a 10 to 12 minute show, that would provide about 10 to 12 different animations for us. So it gets more expensive, the more elaborate sort of transitions and stuff like that that you'd like. So we did find that to be the most, you know, expensive option of these. The traditional fireworks, I'll just touch briefly on, cause I think that's what most people are familiar with. And I should preface this with saying, we budgeted 35,000 this year for, for reference for everybody, for this Fourth of July celebration. So the showtime is basically flexible, and it is with all of these, right? So we can basically build to our budget. Average time would be about 15 to 20 minutes. You can stage things in certain ways to where you can lengthen it a little bit, or have more fireworks go off in a shorter duration. It's something that we could work with. When we contract with a vendor for this, they're responsible for obtaining the approval from the state fire marshal's office, so they submit a permit, get it approved, they carry insurance, they, they cover us, and if we were to partner with somebody, they're an additional insured, they, you know, make sure we're covered there. It's, you know, the most known commodity, I would say. But however, you know, we, we can be affected by the drought conditions as we've, as we've kind of learned. So with these next slides, we're gonna get into is, are the laser shows. And after this slide, I'll have a few different videos to show you, two different ones of just laser shows, and then I'll get into one of kind of a combination of lasers and fireworks. So I thought it'd be best for you to kind of see, yes? Sure.
Our budget is 35, you said.
Correct.
When you're saying 40, do we normally use the entire budget for fireworks, drones, or whatever? Or do we take a portion of that and do it for refreshments and all of that, if that makes sense?
Yeah, in the past, we've factored into, and, and this is from a few years ago, when, when COVID hit, we had some for fireworks that we're planning, and then some for, let's say, like portable restrooms, things of that nature. So there are some other things we'd need to make sure are covered.
Okay, that was, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome. The showtime's flexible on this. It probably could be a little bit longer, an average time of 20 to 25 minutes, similar to the, to the way the fireworks work. It's just gonna be a combination of projected images and laser beams, so it's, it's going to, they can really make it look like fireworks. And the vendor on this, instead of obtaining approval from the fire marshal, the state fire marshal, they obtain the approval from the Federal Aviation Administration prior to the event. So there's an application that they have to, like a permitting process. So it's very similar in how it gets approved and things like that. It's not as widely known as, as fireworks. It's not as affected by the drought conditions, but I would say, you know, as with any sort of event, it still could be affected by weather conditions, right? We have a thunderstorm or something like that, it's, you know, you have that. But as far as drought conditions, it doesn't carry the fire risk as, as fireworks do. So with that being said, I've got a few different examples that I'd like to show y'all, unless you have any questions right now, and of course afterwards, I'll be happy to.
Last year, didn't we have money still in the bank with the contractor that we canceled with?
Trying to think.
Did we get all our money back when we canceled last year? I thought we were briefed that there was still money.
Yeah, we had had conversations with the fireworks vendor, and I don't believe they're gonna be able to extend from, to the Fourth of July. So their, the way their business model works is they have, you can hold a deposit, but not for that long. We have had discussions with them, but so far, nothing has.
So we lost the money?
Has happened from that.
Okay.
Yes, sir, we lost a portion of the money.
Okay.
So we were able to, you know, we had the, the portion of it, but we're, we no longer have a commitment, any sort of other commitment to them. So this particular one is just kind of a patriotic display of fireworks. And now that the sound is kicking on, but you can kind of see, similar for different vendors that we would work with, kind of what they could, could show.
So we would just have to fit this in between flights arriving at San Antonio Airport?
Correct. So make sure we get FAA approval.
Clayton, my understanding, when they, when they do these laser light shows, there's two pieces to it. One, they have a backdrop or a screen.
Correct.
That they project onto, which is a lot of the background that you're seeing here. And then they also have the lasers that shine up.
That's correct, yeah. So could have like, I believe, like a 30-foot projector screen that you could either, if you have somewhere to hang it, or you could rent a man lift, something like that, which would be something that would need to factor into the budget as well, right? So want some of those extracurricular costs to display some still images along with those images you see that are kind of shooting up in the air. And I'll give you the next example. The next slide is, oh, let me go here.
Counsel, counsel.
So this one you can, so the one I'm about to show you is a little more animated as fact that it kind of spans across the sky, but I'll let you take a look at it.
I believe it's the filming that causes that jumping.
Correct. These, these are videos that vendors have sent me, and we did get approval from them to, to use these. But yeah, this is ones that, that makes that jumpy, jumpy look. So a difference between the lasers and the drone shows is the drone shows are not gonna provide as much animation as you would see here as well, right? It's gonna be more static images, I would say, with a little bit of movement, but not what you're looking at right here. Okay, so there's that one. And then the final one that I'll go into is gonna be a combination of fireworks and laser vendors. And there are vendors that work together, even in the area, that have a history of working together to, to do an event where you can have both. And Christine, if you could get that video ready, please. But this one, you'll see, it'll start off with some of the lasers, and then shortly after, you'll see the fireworks go up in the, in the background, but we'll take a look at it. So as you can see there, that, that kind of gives you a little bit of both. And basically to kind of summarize this, and I know there's only so much you can see on a video compared to in person, I just really wanted to give you all an idea of what it would consist of and what the differences are. Bottom line is, it's really flexible, whichever route you take, as far as getting a show that fits within our budget. You know, we haven't, you know, we're just at the preliminary phase, but I have discussed with vendors as far, and, and to kind of what we talked about, what we alluded to, what happened with last year about losing the deposit. One of the vendors I have spoken with on the lasers could, could hold a deposit for an indefinite amount of time, essentially what they said, but a, you know, additional year. Another fireworks vendor that we talked with can be flexible with us as well. So I think we can mitigate that risk.
I was just looking to see if we had money that was left over we could put towards this year's show.
Sure, yeah. So I think the 35,000 is, is everything from an entire event perspective.
I just wanna say, you know, I grew up with fireworks, I like fireworks, but I do wanna add to the, to the commentary that in the past, we've had a lot of dog owners and horse owners, and also some of our veterans with PTSD issues that, you know, have let us know that sometimes the fireworks aren't the most pleasant thing for them, so just adding that into the conversation.
Clayton, did they give you any idea on length of time for a laser show and like potential cost related?
So the length of time for a laser show would, would be probably about 20 to 25 minutes. And they would come set up the, the day prior to that, and then just be ready to go whenever we, we'd like them to. So about 20 to 25 minutes for that. And they would bring in, they would provide the projection screen, some haze machines, which is how you make the lasers reflect where it's visible. But we would be responsible for providing a way to, to hang the projector screen, as well as if we wanted to provide any sort of AV services, that's not included, you know, these vendors don't typically, that would be an extra, we need to account for that. So we could provide it ourselves, or if they have a, you know, provider that they use, we could work that out. That's if you wanted to do some sort of choreographed thing with music that we kind of looked at.
Clayton, if it's raining, does the show go on regardless with lasers, you know?
I guess it could. I guess it just, you know, I, I haven't had that particular discussion as far as, I guess it just depends on how severe it is, right? So, you know, if it's just, just rain, and they, they could have that, I guess, certain, if it's bad enough, they wouldn't want to be out there as well, I guess.
Asking the question from a risk perspective.
Sure.
Cause it's certainly different with fireworks.
Last year, did we cancel or did they cancel? And if they canceled, then was that not written into the contract that if they canceled, we got our deposit back?
I think the county's issued, yeah.
We did, and we did try to work with them on that, and they were, you know, accommodating as they're, they could be, but they were also, you know, they have their business interests. And we did book a spot that they otherwise could have booked somebody else, right? So that's.
The vendor that, that we contracted with last year was different than we'd used in the past, and they did carry the deposit to a certain point, but it, they gave us a use it or lose it date, and we just didn't have any other events at that point.
I guess my point is there's a chance that we have a burn ban or something going on again, and we decide to cancel and use it or lose it again, so.
Yeah, I think the lesson learned is for us to do a more thorough job negotiating and reviewing the contracts.
Correct, and that's why, that's the benefit of getting out in front of it a little bit ahead of time, because it will be here before you know it. But I did have conversations with, there's a vendor that we have in mind, and they told me, and we haven't gotten into contracts or anything like that yet, but that they could, you know, hold that for us for next year, or really, if we, if we give them a few days' notice, they're okay with it. Whereas most standard agreements you would probably see would be more like 30 days, things of that nature.
If you're looking for opinions, while I'm a fireworks person, I'll say that, I mean, love them. I think given the, as we always say, the uniqueness of the city, we have a large portion of veterans that have, I've seen expressed, you know, thoughts and concerns with the fireworks. We have a lot of, as Roy mentioned, horse, horse owners, animals, you name it, livestock in the area. So I'd be more inclined to try something new and just see how it goes. I mean, it, it could flop, it could be terrible, and we could be on the hook for that as counsel. But I would, you know, I, I would be up for trying something new. For me personally, and I just know our family in general, we, you know, we're, to celebrate with others, we're to get a community together. It's about, you know, celebrating our country and all of those things, it's not necessarily just watching the fireworks. So I, I would be interested in trying something new, at least for this year, but also, as we've stated, negotiating into the contract, something with deposits, et cetera, in case there's weather. You know, I have the water concern and the fire possibility in our area, just in general, you know, with the amount of land we have and all those things, so that's just me.
Sure, and, and we absolutely want your opinions, that's definitely what we want. And one thing that I didn't mention, but as you were, were speaking, it, I, it reminded me to state that I did do some due diligence on some of these vendors, and they've done a lot of work for, you know, Texas City, San Marcos, they're, one of the vendors is doing something out in Georgetown here for the, sometime next month. You know, they do corporate events, you name it, it's, it's, they're definitely reputable, large scale, can handle it type of vendors.
I think you've already found out that it's one of the county courthouses.
Correct.
Around Georgetown.
Yeah, Williamson.
That they're doing an event, I think it's on the 7th of March.
March 10th, I believe, is on a Friday.
And so we were looking at it to probably drive up and at least watch the show, just to get an idea of what the laser show looks like. Clayton, I had, you made the comment that AV related, and so does that mean you're doing a contract and all they do is come out and do the laser light show? There's no music tied to it that's synchronized?
Well, they, they can do that, it's just, there's a cost associated with that, so it'll just, we'll have to build that as part of the program, right? So whatever that amount we have, that, that total 35,000 will have to account for anything, sort of equipment we need to rent, any other sort of cost, what they would charge, or what we could contract out with a separate company to provide, you know, AV services. So they can provide it, it's just something we need to keep in mind. That's a project cost.
Everybody synchronized?
So if we get closer in that amount's going to, if we don't, let's say, if we don't exceed the budget, that amount is not going to get us something that I guess we think is feasible or good. I mean, you guys could always come back to council and, you know, talk to us about that.
Yeah, but I feel confident in the amount we have budgeted can get us a, a good show in talking with some of these vendors and, and viewing other videos and things like that, and just doing some research. It looks pretty impressive.
Do we foresee any challenges on venue?
So I have shared with them potential venue as where, as, as well as where it'd be staged at, things of that nature. So they have looked at what our plans are, so no concerns.
Working with the club again. They're excited to do another event with us.
Yeah, and I think doing, you know, events on golf courses and things like that is a, is a pretty standard place for a lot of these companies, that it's just a good spot for them to have it at. So some of the ones that they list as clients and things I've viewed are, are at golf courses and similar type setups. But they've looked at it and don't have any concerns, there's, they can come out and meet with us. We would handle all that in advance.
So Clayton, tonight, do you, do you need something? So, Clayton, tonight, do you need something to go forward that says, hey, we want a laser light show? I think you can take drones off the table.
Drones are off.
I think we were looking at like an $80,000, $100,000 show is what it would require, which is-
Yeah.
Right.
Greg, I'd like to have a little time to get feedback from our residents, see what they would prefer.
So, given that, then when do we need to come back to provide you, hey, do we want to do fireworks? Do we want to do laser light show or a combination?
Just based on feedback, would be early March, just from what vendors have told me. So, that was basically for all the different options that we went over, whether it was fireworks, lasers, you know, a few months, you know, three or four months out is where you really need to get booked up.
Clayton, is it possible to go ahead and start negotiating, working maybe a firework vendor and a laser vendor? At least we're heading down the path here in the next couple of weeks, and we can pull the trigger one way or the other, based off feedback?
Yeah, definitely. It'll just be with the understanding with the vendors. I'll just make it, you know, clear to them that nothing's final yet, but yeah, definitely. We can start working out terms, looking at costs, that sort of stuff.
I would imagine, sitting in their seat, what they'll say is, well, I just can't lock in a date until you put down a deposit, and we're going to hold off on that until we get a little more information.
Correct.
Are we able to say, maybe as council, we can add this, give their direction as a topic next time, or since we need to get it to them quickly at the next meeting?
Well, if we did, and that would be the first meeting in March.
March 2nd.
I mean, I'm just thinking, if we need to do early March, we need to have this plan, and if people want to have communications with, I mean, other residents and things, I mean, I know we all have different residents we speak with, but, you know, I think time is of the essence here, so we probably need to put a date on it and go.
Sure. Yeah, the timing of that would work out, definitely.
So, Clayton, let's make sure we have it on the March 2nd agenda again.
Mm-hmm.
That okay, council?
Sounds good.
Director, you're interested in resident feedback tonight on this plan, or do you want to drag the night out?
I'm Mike Lovelace, I'm a resident. We just talked about spending almost a million dollars on tree project stuff, and as I'm patriotic, I love the flag, I love July 4th, I think the money would be much better spent going towards a once-in-six-or-seven-years tree event, rather than spending it on fireworks, drones, or lasers. That's just my opinion.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else, sir?
No. Does anybody else have any questions for me? Okay, Clayton, thanks.
With that, we'll move on to our reports from staff tonight, and first is the presentation of the quarterly investment report. Rosie.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Rosie Vella, Finance Director, and we have several reports for you today. The quarterly investment report is the first one, and it's for the quarter ended March 31st.
There you go.
Got it. Okay, so, the quarter ended March 31st, January through March, and we have some good news. Let me see. Obviously, our interest rates have gone up. We budgeted based on interest rates last year, and they were dropping, and now they've gone up, so...and we've diversified our investments also. We've invested in Texpool Prime, which, we had Texpool, but now we have Prime, and also in Texas Class. So, our budgeted...we've revised our interest earnings estimate for the year and brought it up a little bit, so...the Texas Class, as you know, pays every day, so it allows us to compound our interest better than we were before. And so, let me...we have a comparative rate. These are all required presentations from the Public Funds Investment Act, so in case you wonder why I do this every quarter, that's why I do it, because we're required to do that, to give you the comparisons. We have the Texpool, the Texpool Prime, the Texas Class, the Texas Class Government, and then the T-Bills. And as you can see, the only rates that are above what we're earning are the T-Bills. And so, that's something we'd like to look at for the future, if we might be able to do some investment in T-Bills. We haven't done that in the past. Also, some certificates of deposit, as you know, the rates are going up, so we're trying to look at some of those, so see if we can get some, maybe...we have a certain percentage of our portfolio that we will never spend because it's our base, and so that can go out a little further. The pools that we have are daily maturities, so we started to look at some CDs, but right now, the CDs that we could get were at lower rates, and of course, that doesn't make any sense to drop your interest rate. But there are some that we can get for a longer period of time that can get us better rates, so that's what we're studying right now. So, this required display is also what tells you where we've been. As you can see, we've gone up quite a bit, and so, our estimates were based on those rates that we had experienced last year. And so, since our rates are better now, then our projected interest income is a lot better. So, do you have any questions? As I said, we're looking at some CDs that we might be able to invest for a longer period of time. Our pool right now is daily maturities, but at good rates, and so, obviously, we don't want to go out longer and drop our rates, but if we can go out longer and increase our rates, then that's what we want to do. Any questions on the investment report?
Anybody else questions?
So, if you...shall I go on into the financial report? Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is the quarterly financial report. Okay, so, this is our quarterly financial update, and it's obviously for the first quarter of the year. It was starting with our general fund. As you know, last year, we had lower interest rates, so we budgeted our interest earnings at a lower point, but as the interests have gone up, we have revised our estimate. So, in the interest earnings column, we had a budget of $73,000, and we've brought that up to $350,000 for the year. Actual for the quarter is already over the estimate for the year, so obviously, we needed to do some adjustments there. Our property tax is right where we expected it to be. The franchise fees, we had budgeted $692,000, but it looks like we're going to be at $731,000. That's what our revised budget is. And obviously, the interest earnings, we're revising considerably. Everything else is looking pretty much where we expected it to be. The next slide is the general fund expenses, and in our revised budget, the FY '23 projection, we have taken into account the vacancies that we've had so far and projecting when we're going to be able to fill those vacancies. So, we're bringing the expenses for personnel down a couple of hundred thousand. In other areas, they're pretty...staying pretty consistent in the...and so, our totals, we're at 43.3% of our budget, and we're one quarter in. So, we think we're going to...as you know, we budgeted a deficit for the year, but we think that deficit will be significantly lower now than we had expected at the beginning. Our property tax levy, we've collected 64.5% of the ad valorem tax. Our sales taxes have done well. They're collected two months in arrears, as you know, so the October taxes were 0.25% higher than last October. Our permits are a little lower than they were last year, so we're going to keep an eye on that in case we do need to adjust our estimate. Right now, we're leaving it where it was, but we had 22 permits through December 31st in the first quarter, and last year, we had 33, so we're going to keep an eye on that. Our franchise fees have doubled over the last 10 years, and so, we've made some adjustments to that number as well. In the enterprise fund, utility revenues, we are at...you'll notice that the wastewater revenues were quite a bit higher, but we had some ARPA funds that were in there, so it's not a true comparison to last year. So, our water revenues, we're at...we're leaving those numbers pretty much what we budgeted, a little bit higher on the wastewater. The expenses that we've had in personnel, again, we...when we have vacancies, we look at when we expect to fill those vacancies, and we bring down the projections to what we think they'll be taking into account, those vacancies. So, total expenses, we had budgeted 4.9, we're estimating 4.90 now, and the actual, we've spent 27.5% of the year. Do you have any questions?
Anybody else here tonight have any questions? All right, thanks, Rosie.
Thank you.
Well, that completes the reports that we had from staff tonight, and really, all the business that we had before council. And we'll move on to requests and announcements. Any council member have any announcements they would like to make?
Comment?
Go ahead.
Just want to point out that the event, to me, last night was excellent. Thank you, staff. Everybody did a great job, and I know that myself and my wife Teresa enjoyed ourselves immensely, and I know how hard you all worked to put that together, and I'd like to say thank you.
I had a couple of announcements. It was my last one, but I'll move it up to the beginning, because I had a thank you also for reference the State of the City last night. But a comment that I wanted to pass along is that we had 237...I can't say individuals, but people that...237 logins to our live stream of the State of the City last night. So, I thought that was...that was pretty good. And then, we had about 140 to 145 people that attended in person, so it was...we were close to a sellout. We were within five, so...but also, thank you for all the hard work and a very quality event. A couple other announcements, City Hall will be closed on Monday due to national holiday. We have a city election coming up. The filing period for it ends tomorrow. Everybody is considering running as part of that election, they would have to get filed by close of business tomorrow. And then Christina had me put out a note for poll workers. If we do have an election, that we're always looking for poll workers to work the election site, and there's some...we'll have to get them in touch with the elections commission at each of the counties.
Kendall County, yes.
Kendall County, and they'll set them up with the training that they need, but we are looking for volunteers to-
It's not necessarily volunteer, you do get paid.
Somebody, anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Is there any council member that has an item that they would like added to a future agenda? Okay. And Tom, and I'm not tracking any requirements to go into executive session tonight?
Not on my end, no, sir.
And with that, Christina and I have the time now is 9:13, and we are adjourned.